Good morning. We're going to go ahead and begin, and actually I think I'm going to pull this back a little bit just so I have a wider-ranging view here. Thank you. I'm State Senator Joe Semitian. This is one of our 11th Senate District Town Halls. If you were hoping to be somewhere else, this is your chance to slip away quietly, I guess. I do want to thank you for being here. I know you could be anywhere else in the world on a Saturday morning, and thank you for being here. We expect we'll have a few folks who slip in after they found a parking spot. For those of you who are not familiar with the 11th State Senate District, it is one of those artfully drawn districts that you read about in the newspaper sometime. It starts up in San Carlos in the north, and then includes not only San Carlos but Redwood City, Menlo Park, East Palo Alto, and Atherton. Palo Alto, Stanford, Los Altos, Los Altos Hills, Campbell, Cupertino, about 300,000 folks in San Jose, and then over the hills into Santa Cruz County where it includes all of Santa Cruz and Capitola. For those of you who noticed that it does not include Mountain View, which is five minutes from where we sit, yes, that's correct. Again, as I say, it's one of those remnants of a system of reapportionment and redistricting which we have set aside, and we can talk about that a little bit later this morning as well. But again, thank you for being here. I know we have some of our elected officials from nearby, and I want to ask them to introduce themselves in just a minute, but let me just get a quick show of hands so we get a sense for where people are from. How many of you are from Palo Alto? Show of hands. Okay. How many of you are from Menlo Park or Atherton? Okay, a few. Anybody from Mountain View? Los Altos, Los Altos Hills? Anyone from elsewhere that I have not asked? Yes, and you are from San Jose. Thank you for joining us today. And also, San Jose. Great, thank you as well. Let me begin over here and ask some of our elected officials to please just stand and introduce yourself. I've learned over the years that if I do it this way, I cannot overlook anyone, so this is a good system.
Very smart. I'm curious to see if I might serve them on Friday.
Thank you for being with us today, Kirsten. And also...
Jerry Carlson, Councilman from...
Thank you for being here, Jerry.
Hello, could I ask about the mayor of Palo Alto?
Thank you.
Matt Burden.
Thank you very much. I thought what we might do today is spend just a few minutes with a sort of a brief recap that I'll provide on how things have gone this year in Sacramento, and then go directly to your questions and comments. We do have cards at every place. We have some folks who are going to collect those cards. They are the folks with the baskets. They are not taking up a collection, notwithstanding the state's difficult circumstances. They are just there to take your cards. So they will walk down, and if you just pass your questions to the center, they'll be happy to pick them up. We'll get to, I hope, every card that we have today, and if not, we'll get back to you after today's session. I would say that this past year was both another challenging and certainly interesting year in terms of the state of California. We once again struggled with budget issues. We had a little bit different dynamic this year because, as some of you will recall, the public has voted to allow a budget to be adopted by a simple majority rather than a two-thirds, and that made the dynamic very different. We also, as I'm sure you all know, had a new governor, Governor Jerry Brown, and, you know, it was a year of getting acquainted, let's put it that way. He, with what he found in Sacramento, for those of us who are in the state legislature, a year of working with the new governor. The previous governor, Arnold Schwarzenegger, had been there for seven years, and whether you were a fan or not a fan, after seven years, you sort of developed an understanding of what will go, what won't, what someone is prepared to work with you on, where they're not prepared to work with you. New governor this year meant that that was a whole new set of equations, as I say, getting acquainted for the governor with 120 members of the state legislature, 80 in the state assembly and 40 in the state senate where I serve. The governor, I think appropriately, said that his first and focused task as he arrived in January was going to be to try and sort through the budget issues. And while I mentioned that we now have a simple majority requirement for adopting a budget, we still have a two-thirds requirement to raise any revenues. We also have a two-thirds requirement to extend any revenues that are set to expire, and we also have a two-thirds requirement for putting revenues on the ballot. So the governor's challenge, as he saw it, in crafting a sensible lasting budget solution was to make sure we did the level of cuts we needed to make, but also to generate the revenues we needed to generate, to have a genuine balanced budget going forward. The governor was hopeful that he could find a few of my Republican colleagues in both the assembly and the senate who would be willing to join him in putting a measure on the ballot. He thought he could get that done by March so that there'd be time to put a ballot measure for us all to vote on, on the ballot in June. You may have noticed that didn't happen. He then said, "Well, I'm going to try and get bipartisan two-thirds majorities to put a measure on the ballot, and we'll do that with an eye towards the November elections." He needed to get that done before the end of June so it could be part of our budget deliberations and get a new budget in place by July 1 when we start our fiscal year. He was unable to make that happen as well. Candidly, while I think the governor was wise to focus on budget, budget, budget for the first six months of his time in the Capitol, I think he was perhaps unduly optimistic about his ability to get what I thought was a relatively balanced approach and the kind of bipartisan agreement that might have allowed a ballot measure to go forward. That meant that we were left to deal with the budget on a majority basis but with no additional revenue, and with the loss of three sources of revenue that represented billions of dollars that were all set to expire on July the 1st. So as of July 1st this year, we no longer had the income tax surcharge that had been in place for a couple of years. We no longer had the additional sales tax revenue that had been in place for a couple of years. We no longer had the additional increment on our vehicle license fee. All of that was billions of dollars of revenue that the governor had hoped could mitigate some of those cuts, ultimately because we didn't get the two-thirds majority that didn't go on the ballot. That meant that we had to simply approve a budget with the expectation that those revenues would be lost. Now, just to make it a little bit more challenging, literally days before the end of the fiscal year, on June 30th, we got news that there was some additional revenue coming into the state. And the question, in a volatile world like the one we live in today, is, was that a blip or was that a trend? Was that an indicator of some uptick in the economy that would be lasting and on which we could rely in the coming year? Or was it, as I say, just a blip? Ultimately, the answer was, I thought, unclear. I think most of my colleagues thought it was unclear. And so the solution was to pass a budget based on our best estimate of revenues, but to build into the budget a series of triggers, trigger cuts, so that if we are short as the year progresses, those cuts will take place automatically. And that is what has made a number of folks somewhat nervous, frankly, about where we go from here. We're obviously July, August, September, October into this fiscal year. I have to tell you that initial numbers are not terribly encouraging. There are up to $4 billion worth of further cuts in the budget depending on what the revenues look like by the end of December, beginning of January. So on that one, I think the only thing I can say to all of us is, stay tuned. We'll have to see what happens on the revenue front in the course of the next few months. I think it was a challenge again for the administration in terms of a legislative program because they were so focused on budget issues, and again, I say understandably, that by the time the budget finally got done, and it did get done this year, more or less on time. We had a budget in place before the July 1 date, not anything that anyone should be bragging about since that is the job of the state legislature and the governor, but as many of you know, that has been very hard to do in years past because of that two-thirds majority. Simple majority, I think, has worked well in its first year. We did in fact get a budget done on time. The majority party has to accept responsibility for the budget it passed, but with some understanding that it accepts responsibility for the budget it passed given the limited revenues available because the two parties were not able to agree about putting a measure on the ballot. And that is the sort of the dynamic that we'll face in the coming years where we still have a, we now have a majority vote for the budget, but we have a two-thirds majority still in place for additional revenues, extending revenues, putting revenues on the ballot. All of those will continue to require two-thirds. So it will be an interesting back and forth on the budget. As I said, the governor then was, I think, a little bit caught short because we went on recess for four weeks in mid-July, came back for the final four weeks of the legislative session in the middle of August, and then wrapped up in the middle of September, and I think at that point the governor realized that he really had not had an opportunity, frankly, to advance a legislative agenda during the course of the year because of the focus on budget. And it's interesting to see how with a new administration, your view differs. If you're someone who's been in the legislature for 10-plus years now, as I have, and in a term-limited world, that makes you a veteran, you're sort of, "Look, can we get going? We have things to do here. You know, we've been working on this issue or that issue for a decade, and it's time to make some progress." If you are a new governor in the first year of your first term, your view is sometimes, "What's the rush? We just got here." And it's just a very different perspective on the work of the state government, and as I said, that's been a bit of a struggle, I think, for some members of the legislature and the governor. It's a different dynamic. In terms of the work I've done this year, I think most of you know that I focus a lot of my work in the education, environment, energy, water, privacy, elder abuse arenas. That was the case again this year. I would say the most gratifying piece of work was probably the final passage and signature by the governor earlier in the year of the 33 percent renewable energy legislation that I authored, which commits California to get 33 percent of its energy from renewable resources by the year 2020. This was a four-and-a-half-year effort on my part, building on the previous two years where we had worked to get the 20 percent by 2010 standard into law. Yes, it sounded environmentally. I also think it sounded from an energy standpoint because if we diversify our energy portfolio, we are less vulnerable to the kind of market manipulation we saw back in the beginning of the last decade. I also think it makes foreign policy sense to the extent that California and America are energy self-sufficient. We are less vulnerable to demands from folks who are pushing our energy needs as the basis for our foreign policy decisions. But I also thought that at this particular time, it was a tremendous opportunity for California in terms of economic development. We had the opportunity and took it to send a clear message to the market. If we send that clear message to the market, the market will and has responded with investment dollars, tax revenues, and jobs that have come to California. If we did not send that message to the market, then those investment dollars, those tax revenues, and those jobs go to some other state or some other nation. And I think we have seen, even in the relatively brief period of time following the signature in March by the governor, that the dollars, the jobs, the revenues are in fact coming to California. And a brief aside, I think all of us are a little frustrated, if not angry, about the Solyndra story that we've been reading about in the newspaper with respect to renewable energy. I want to be very clear, the legislation we passed here in California does not pick winners and losers. It says, "Here's the target, here's the obligation, here's the commitment," and it then lets the market sort out which kinds of renewable energy, from what sources, will get us to that date, and I think that's the smarter way to go in terms of achieving the goal but also making sure that we get to that goal in a thoughtful and economically sensible way. There is a packet in the back, and it is... We don't often get music at these events, so I'm, this is good, this is a plus. There is a packet in the back that has a number of the legislative efforts that my office and I have undertaken in the last year, year and a half, but I want to underscore one disappointment of the year as well among the 14 pieces of legislation that we put on the governor's desk. Many of you know I have an annual There Ought To Be A Law contest, and it has been a wonderful way to tap into the talent and expertise of the people that I represent. This past year, I had a constituent from Santa Cruz County, who actually is from Palo Alto originally, a woman named Amy Colton, who came to me and said, "Senator, I'm a nurse. My father was a doctor. I live well, I eat right, I exercise. Because I'm a nurse, I do mammogram every year religiously. I self-examine. No history of cancer in my family, and after seven years of getting clean mammograms, I was told I had an advanced case of breast cancer and had to have a mastectomy." And when my constituent asked, "How is that possible?" When I had year after year after year of, you know, "Happy grams," as she calls them, the letters that come every year, she was told, "Well, you have something called dense breast tissue, and dense breast tissue reads white on your mammogram. Cancer reads white on your mammogram. So that means that for a significant number of women who have dense breast tissue, probably 40 percent of the women who go to get a mammogram have dense breast tissue, for a significant percentage of those women, mammograms are of limited utility. There are other screening methods that might be helpful in combination with the mammogram." She said, "Well, why didn't anybody know that?" And she was told, "Oh, we did know that. The radiologist in fact assessed it. The radiologist reported it to her referring physician." The one person in this three-way conversation that didn't have that information was the patient herself. So she, of course, was unable to take any steps to guide her own health care. Her "Ought To Be A Law" suggestion was a simple one, that if you are one of those women who has dense breast tissue, when you get your lay letter, as it's called, the notice about your mammogram results, there should be a two-sentence notice that simply tells you that you have dense breast tissue, that that may have obscured a clear reading, and that you might benefit from other supplemental screenings, and that you should talk to your doctor if you have any questions. That was the notice. She came to Sacramento. She did a wonderful job. She's actually quite a private person and not all that comfortable in that setting, particularly sharing a difficult and personal story. Eventually, the bill passed the California State Senate 35 to 1, in spite of opposition from the California Medical Association, 66 to 6 in the California State Assembly, and Governor Brown vetoed the bill. That is probably the biggest disappointment of the year legislatively for me. The Mercury News had a very compelling editorial just yesterday, if you'd like to go home and take a look online. We will be bringing the bill back. The governor did hold out some hope that if we could recraft the notice language, he might be open to it. But this was, in my view, the biggest disappointment for me of the year because I thought this was one where, for those of you who wonder, can we ever get anything done on a bipartisan basis? 35 to 1 votes on bills that are opposed by the medical establishment are not all that easy to come by, and we had, I thought, a lost opportunity here with the governor's veto. So we'll be back at it again in the coming year. Other pieces of legislation, I don't want to go bill by bill by bill. I'd rather just talk to you about whatever you're interested in and take your questions. We will take them all. Again, work in many of the areas that, you know, I do a lot of my work in, privacy, elder abuse, education, environment, and of course, it wouldn't be a year in the Capitol if we didn't spend some quality time on high-speed rail, which I expect we'll have a chance to do this morning as well. So why don't I just stop there? Thank you again for coming. Happy to talk about anything and everything that you all like. One of the reasons I enjoy these conversations is they're pretty candid. A lot of you I know come to sidewalk office hours, and people like those because they can sort of do a walk-by and have a quick conversation, but every year, people also say, "Could we please sit down for a while and have a real conversation?" And so this is that opportunity. And by the way, I want to acknowledge our former state assembly member from this area, Sally Lieber, who has joined us. Thank you for being here, Sally. Appreciate your presence this morning. What do we have in the way of questions? Brock? Okay. Brock would like me, this is Brock Winston, by the way, who is our district director. Thank you very much. He will get me all of the cards. He says he is holding some of the high-speed rail cards, not holding them hostage, holding them together so we can bundle some of them, and if there are common threads, respond to them, but we will get to it. I think last year, we ended up with 44 questions about high-speed rail, and the end of the session ended up sort of being an informal high-speed rail conversation, but we will get to those in a bit. And again, Brock, you're going to try and bundle them so we can have crisper answers. All right. We have a question that says, "Thank you for your service. I hope you will continue to serve," and a couple of suggestions about in what venue I might do that. I'll just say thank you and say, "Today's not a political day. Today's a public service day," so we'll put those issues aside. "How many teachers have been let go in California due to budget cuts?" I do not know the answer to that question in terms of a specific number. I do know we are struggling on a number of different levels. We have probably seen cuts over the last three years that are roughly 20 percent to school districts around the state compared to what they otherwise would have, should have received under existing formulas. In most districts, what that means is a combination of cutting programs back and losing staff accordingly, reducing the school year typically by five, school days out of 180 in the course of a school year, furlough days for folks who are retained, and programs and services reduced in most cases to whatever state law requires rather than allows. We are anxious about these trigger cuts that I mentioned earlier because there is the potential for another seven days of the school year to be lost if in fact we see additional cuts in annual funding to K through 12 education. Important to understand that that has an impact not only on the employees of a local school district, and of course, we have 6 million kids up and down the state of California in K through 12s in 1,000 different school districts, but important to understand what happens if those staff members no longer have the salary as a result of furloughs to make the mortgage payment, to make the rent payment, to make the car payment. All of that has an adverse effect on the communities in which they live as well as they are putting fewer dollars into the local economies of every community in which they live. So it has been a particularly tough time. I would also say that we got through two or three years with less damage done than might otherwise have been the case by virtue of the fact that, you will recall, we had some federal stimulus funds that came. We had the opportunity for districts to spend down their reserves, and the state tried to give folks a little more flexibility to do that, understanding that we were in a tough spot, but those federal funds are gone. Those reserves have been spent, and we lost those revenue sources as of July 1 at the beginning of this fiscal and school year. All of that makes this year a particularly tough year for public education in California and frankly makes the notion of trigger cuts all the more daunting, as I say, the potential for up to another seven days of the school year being lost. Next question. "Assuming that you supported the Dream Act recently signed by Jerry Brown, how do you personally reconcile the potential for the act to encourage more illegal entry into this country as others seek to take advantage of benefits provided by the state?" The Dream Act actually is a pair of bills authored by Assemblymember Gil Sadio, formerly Senator Gil Sadio, and the measure that Governor Brown just recently signed allows a limited number of undocumented students to apply for financial aid if they are otherwise qualified for higher education in California, UC, CSU, and community colleges. Could take a big step back first on the immigration issue. The challenge with immigration is that it is a federal issue which frankly has been handled unsuccessfully, just try and keep it matter-of-fact here, unsuccessfully, over a great many years by presidents and members of Congress from both parties. That's my view. It is a, we have a federal policy that does not work, that is largely based on fictions and hypocrisies, and then the challenges, that the adverse consequences are actually borne by states and local governments who pick up the cost of that failed federal policy. And my observation over the years is the government never works well when the authority is in one place and the consequences are in another because it means that the folks who have the authority don't really have any incentive to sort things out, and the people who are dealing with the consequences don't have any ability to mitigate those consequences because of the disconnect. There probably are 37 to 38 million Californians right now, based on the census data and our own Department of Finance data. Of those 37 to 38 million Californians, probably 2 and 1/2 million are here unlawfully. My own view on immigration issues for the most part with respect to unlawful immigration is that, given a failed federal policy, we have to be practical about what the consequences are in our own communities. And I'm going to raise a controversial issue that the question doesn't even raise before I get to the Dream Act again. When I say "practical," what do I mean? I mean, there are 2 and 1/2 million people here. That's a practical reality. One of the questions I've gotten in some years is, "Do I support drivers' licenses being made available for folks in that group of 2 and 1/2 million?" And some people say, "Look, Senator, what part of illegal do you not understand?" To which I respond, "What part of 2 and 1/2 million people are already here are we not prepared to come to grips with? I'm pretty sure they're not all walking to work, school, church, wherever, and if they are here and if they're going to drive, I frankly would like them to have a license so that we know they have proven they know the rules of the road, they are at least qualified to get insurance, whether they get it or not, as required by law, so that we have an address in the case of an emergency." I think all of those are practical public safety reasons for us to want folks, whether they're here lawfully or not, to get a driver's license. Now, some folks say, "Well, you shouldn't be giving that privilege to people who are here unlawfully," to which I would say, "All due respect, I have been to the DMV, and I did not think it was a privilege for me to be there when I went. I thought it was my obligation to go, and I think that obligation ought to attach to anyone who is here who's going to drive, whether they are here lawfully or not." To me, that's a practical response to a failed federal policy, which does have to be addressed at the federal level. Back to the Dream Act. Couple provisions in the Dream Act that don't get a lot of publicity. We're talking only about youngsters who are actually so successful, notwithstanding that their families brought them here unlawfully, that they are qualified and accepted to UC or CSU or our community college system. And to me then, the practical side of me says, "Do I want to waste that talent?" And the answer to that question for me is no. The next question I ask myself is, as a practical matter, would I rather that that 18-year-old be behind the desk in the UC system or on a street corner with no prospects? I'd rather have them behind the desk in the UC system. And then the piece of this that, as I say, is not widely understood is, you have to have been in a California high school for three years in order to qualify, and then this most important provision to me is, you have to have actually applied for lawful status in the United States. And with that set of constraints, I do think the smart thing, not the ideological thing one way or the other, but the smart thing is to say, that limited number of students, and it's frankly a very modest number of students, particularly when you look at the total cost of our Cal Grant program. The smart thing is to make higher education available for those students. I understand that there are others who have different point of view, but that's my view, and that's the long background on how I get there. Please comment, "How in the world may I continue to help members of my own family with their college tuition when I'm expected to also help illegals in college?" And I think I just responded to my views on there. Have I heard that one of Governor Brown's bills was to ignore the laws that are required for driving, license insurance for illegals in the state? And I think I've responded to that. And what are we doing about the state being the worst in the country? I continue to think that in spite of all the challenges that California faces, this is a remarkable place, and particularly here in the valley, we have reinvented ourselves a half dozen times over the last 50 years, and I continue to be optimistic about our ability to do that. That being said, I think America, California, and our region have frankly rested on our laurels for a little too long. We're a little too inclined sometimes to pat ourselves on the back for the good work of past generations. Here in Palo Alto, since so many of you are Palo Altons, I think many of you know that decades ago, there were a group of folks who made smart decisions about public utilities that have allowed us to have low-cost utilities and frankly some extra resources to do some of the things that are provided in the way of programs and services that Palo Altons particularly enjoy. I'm guessing most of us couldn't tell you the name of any one of those people, but we owe them a thank you. we owe them a thank you. The greatest generation that built the infrastructure, including the educational infrastructure that made California the state it has been, you know, 50 years ago, people understood that there was a distinction to be made between spending and investing, and people did invest in the future of the state. We have to start thinking about investing in the future of the state with long-term consequences. And there really is a distinction to be made between money that is an expenditure, we're simply spending the money, and money that is invested. Part of the frustration, I think, for funding in the K through 12 arena is that people are impatient. In a 21st century online world, the notion that we're going to invest in early childhood education for a payoff 13 years later is sometimes a little tough for people to come to grips with. But I do think that those of us who are concerned about what kind of shape California is in need to start thinking more about how we invest with an eye towards the long-term future and not always expect a quick return on our investment. Second, I would say that one of the things we can and should be doing to sort of recapture the greatness that made California and still makes California a place that people talk about with envy and pride all over the world is we've got to do more to make our state governance and our system of local governance function in a way that is really as responsive and nimble as it needs to be in the 21st century. We have made, I think, some modest progress, and I think we're going to see results in the state government post-2012. Unfortunately for me, I won't be there to be the individual beneficiary of any of that, but in addition to the measure that has said we can do our budget on a simple majority, some of you know that we have also passed a measure that involved redrawing of political district lines by a non-political, to the extent any of this can ever be truly non-political, nonpartisan, relatively objective group of folks who labored over this task for the last year. Now, why is that important? It's important because historically legislators were required by law, not just allowed by law, to draw their own legislative districts. In some decades after the census, every 10 years, that got done to partisan advantage for one party or another. A decade ago, it got done in what is known as a bipartisan incumbent protection gerrymander, which means that both Democrats and Republicans were given safe seats. And so all of the Democrats got pushed into some districts, all the Republicans got pushed into other districts, and guess what? The experience of the last decade tells us that didn't give anybody much incentive to find common ground or compromise because Republicans from those solidly Republican districts were listening only to folks in their district, Democrats from those solidly Democratic districts were listening only to folks in their district, and that meant that we ended up more polarized rather than less. That has changed. The districts that we vote in in June and November of the coming year will be the newly drawn districts. And I don't want to say it's going to change the world overnight. It's not. Berkeley will still be Berkeley. Orange County will still be Orange County. But we will see in a half dozen or a dozen places around the state districts that require their elected officials to be a little more oriented towards finding common ground. And I think that will be healthy. The other piece of the political equation, and this is the third reform that has already taken place, is we have made the decision as a state, and again, this was on the ballot, to move forward with something called the top-two primary. And what that means is when we go vote for state assembly in June, or for state senate or in June, or for Congress in June, it won't really be a Democratic or Republican primary that we vote in. There'll be a list of candidates. Their party affiliation will probably be identified, but Democrats and Republicans will be on the same ballot. And whether you're a Democrat or a Republican, or a peace and freedom, or Libertarian Party member, or a decline to state independent, you'll walk into the polling place and you'll be able to vote for any of those people you want to. And that means that every one of them has to listen to and respond to the legitimate concerns of everybody in this room without regard to your party. Then what will happen is the top-two vote-getters will run off in November. What does that mean? Well, it means that we could have two Democrats running in a highly Democratic area against one another, or we could have two Republicans voting, excuse me, running against each other in a highly Republican area. Could have a Democrat and a Republican. Some places you might have a Democrat and a Green Party candidate running against each other. But it means that in that runoff election, if you've got a couple of Republicans running, that one of those Republicans may decide that it's worth his or her time to appeal to everybody because all voters will be voting and we'll have the whole pool voting. And instead of it being a polarized debate from the primary, it'll be a broader debate with all of the voters in the general election. Same is true on the Democratic side. If you've got two Democrats who are running against each other, they're going to be running against each other, not just in that primary, but the top two, if they end up being the top vote-getters, may end up running against each other in the general election, and they'll also be obliged to talk not just to the minority of folks who would have come out in a Democratic primary, but to the large number of folks from all parties who turn out in a November election. Top-two primary plus the reapportionment and redistricting reform plus the budget reform, I think, makes us a little more optimistic about where we're headed in coming years in terms of having a system that is responsive. It's not a cure-all. There are other reforms out there that can and should be addressed, certainly in the world of campaign finance, that's one, certainly in the world of the way we use our initiative process in California, that's another I would mention. But those are things that can be addressed that I think will help. Finally, we've got to grow the economy in California if we're going to reclaim the greatness that was referenced in the question. I think that was one of the sort of the driving forces behind my work on renewable energy. There are other things we can and should do. I raised a few eyebrows last year and even more so this when I pushed forward some reforms, some streamlining efforts in connection with SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. People said, "Joe, what are you talking about? You're the chair of the Environmental Quality Committee. You score 99% to 100 with the Sierra Club and League of Conservation Voters. What are you messing with SEQA for?" And I said, "Look, SEQA is a body of law in California that has done us a world of good in terms of protecting the quality of life that we value." That being said, there are things we can and should do to streamline the process so that worthy projects can move forward without being unnecessarily hindered. And I thought if anyone was going to do that, it probably needed to be somebody who could claim to be the chair of the Environmental Quality Committee and who had the kind of environmental record that I did and generate some trust that we could get this done and that the two things weren't mutually exclusive. So let's go on to... Another question about driver's licenses, which apparently I had anticipated even though I didn't know it was coming. Brock, I think we're ready for the next batch of questions.
[mimicking a child's voice]
Do you feel that the majority of voters in California at the present time are in favor of abolishing the death penalty? Where'd Brock go? Could we get the easy questions instead, Brock? That's my request. I think California voters and voters in my district are split on this issue. And it's interesting, it's one of the reasons why I enjoy the sidewalk office hours and find them helpful, more importantly, because it gives me a chance not just to sort of say, "Well, what do the numbers look like?", but to talk with people about how they feel about these issues. California voters and voters in our area are split on the issue, and they're frankly split in part depending on what question you ask. If you say, "Do you want to abolish the death penalty in California?", the majority of voters in California and a majority of voters in our area would say, "No, I don't want to abolish the death penalty." If you said, "Would you like to replace the death penalty with life in prison without possibility of parole?", you get closer to getting a majority or 50/50. So how you ask the question has a lot to do with how people respond. One of the concerns people have when you talk about life without possibility of parole as an alternative to the death penalty is they say, "You say life without possibility of parole, but will it really be life without possibility of parole?" They're skeptical about whether or not that phrase means what it says it means. People are, as I said, very narrowly divided on the question in California. The numbers are different than they were 10, 20, 30 years ago. And the arguments on both sides go something like this. There are folks who believe in the death penalty in special circumstances because constitutional law says that we don't and can't use the death penalty in case of every homicide, for example. In special circumstances, they say there are some crimes that are so heinous that the death penalty is appropriate. While it may or may not be a deterrent in the individual sense, there needs to be a strong culture of deterrence in our criminal justice code. And while we want to think about the fairness of the system to people who are accused and prosecuted, we also want to think about the rights of the victims and their families. I think that's the short argument. Folks on the other side of the debate...
[inaudible]
rather than less. That's the debate. It's interesting to me as I talk to people, and this is now a function of my district because I don't have these conversations around the state. Most people have... Don't have anger in their voice when they have these conversations. Most people just have sort of thought through and know where they come down from. And some, you know, part of the challenge in Sacramento and too much of the political dialogue in the state and country in my view is that if they annoy the conversation, it often provides more heated light for the conversation. The people I talk to about this issue informally, in small group settings, town halls, federal offices, sort of have thought through, know what they think, but they're pretty respectful, frankly, of the other point of view. Some of you are probably lying and maybe are in California. I'll tell you, historically, I have supported the death penalty in special terms. I think I have come down on the side where we say that ultimately there needs to be a culture of accountability in the criminal justice system. And that we have been careful, I think, to limit the use of the death penalty to really extraordinary cases. And that's been my position. That being said, I have been opposed to expanding the application of the death penalty because every year someone who wants to be tough on crime has a proposal to add one or two or three more crimes to the list. And I don't really think that ought to be the way we approach the issue. I think it's an extraordinary sanction, and it ought to be viewed as an extraordinary sanction. And I have frankly suggested a couple of times that we have a formal moratorium on the death penalty, which would allow us to come to grips with what we all know, which is that the system isn't working whether you're a pro or con in California, given the fact that we've got people stacked up on death row and an inability of the system to figure out how to make all of this work, again, whatever your point of view is. That being said, I'm open to another look. I think elected officials are too reticent to say they are going to keep an open mind. I think elected officials are afraid that somebody will say they flip-flopped on an issue. I may have my source wrong, but I think it was Mark Twain who said only fools and the dead never change their minds. And I think, you know, all of us have to learn from the experience we've had. Some of you will know I had a constituent who was wrongfully accused and imprisoned for 12 years for a murder he did not commit. And I ended up taking up his cause in the state legislature, and somebody, Member Libra, I remember was one of the folks who spoke in support of my efforts at, I think, 3 o'clock in the morning on the last night of session all those years ago. I have to tell you, that was a personal experience that affected my view on the subject because I knew intellectually that the system had shortcomings and flaws. I knew that mistakes were made. I knew that DNA evidence was highlighting some of those mistakes. But until you're sitting there working with a real human being who in this case was, and I'm afraid to use these words, fortunate that he only lost 12 years of his life in prison for a crime he didn't commit rather than having his life taken irrevocably, it does make you rethink some of these issues. So that's where I am personally. That's where I think the debate is. The shorter answer to the question would have been, the public's pretty much split right down the middle in our area on the question of the death penalty, and it has a lot to do with how you ask the question. Question: Did Governor Jerry Brown veto a bill protecting cellphone users from law enforcement looking into people's cellphones? The short answer is yes, he did. There was a piece of legislation authored by one of my colleagues, my recollection is that it was Senator Leno. And the bill simply said that if you want to look at the contents of someone's cellphone, that you would need a warrant. And the question here is, how about a bill that be introduced and try again? Also, what about, all right, we'll get to the water issue in just a moment. So Senator Leno, I do believe it was Senator Leno, introduced a bill, and the bill was, if you want, if law enforcement wants to look at the contents of your phone, then they ought to have a warrant. That passed with pretty healthy margins, as I recall, in the legislature, at least on the Senate side, and Governor Brown vetoed it. It's not clear to me why the governor vetoed this particular bill, because I think there are going to be many circumstances where it is appropriate for law enforcement to look at the contents of a cellphone. But in those appropriate circumstances, it is appropriate, in my judgment, to get a warrant, which is entirely doable to make sure that people are not abusing the process. I don't know whether or not Senator Leno will be reintroducing the bill, so stay tuned. We're in the middle of a two-year session. I suspect that it will depend a little bit on what Senator Leno thinks his chances are with a retooled version of the bill, given the fact that Governor Brown is going to be the governor for at least three more years, and there's no point in bringing the same issue back over and over again to get the same veto over and over again. And then it says, "Also, what about protecting the state's water supply with the delta, the levees which are at risk? What if they fail before they can be fixed?" Some of you will know, but most of you have no reason to know, actually, I've spent a fair amount of time on these water issues, and in fact, the legislature and former Governor Schwarzenegger pulled together a fairly significant package of water reform legislation in the year 2009. Among those was my Senate Bill 1 in the seventh extraordinary session. You know it's an extraordinary year when there are seven extraordinary sessions, by the way. And my fundamental concern was that we were in denial about one of California's prime water sources, which is the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta, which is an extraordinary environmental asset and is probably the most significant estuary in the Pacific Coast, North or South America, but it's also the source of 2/3 of the state's drinking water. And we tend to think of it as remote, if we think of it at all, but it's probably responsible for half the water in Santa Clara County here. So I thought we made good progress. The questioners, comments, and questions go to the fact that while we're trying to figure out what to do, which takes far too long in this state, and on water issues, I would say we've sort of been at a standstill for close to 25 years until we got this work done a couple of years ago, there is the potential for a real catastrophe. I have said before, I think the delta is California's Katrina waiting to happen. The scientists tell us there's a 2 out of 3 chance that a major earthquake... The scientists tell us there's a 2 out of 3 chance that a major earthquake would turn the delta upside down with disastrous consequences, not only environmentally, but in terms of our water supply and water quality. That means that we need a better emergency response system than we have in place today. And I have done some work with one of my colleagues from the delta to try and make sure that those emergency response systems are in place. But the real solution, the lasting solution, is to figure out what is the long-term future of the delta? How are we going to make that possible? Does it involve the very controversial, but I believe ultimately necessary notion of some new way to move water through, over, under, around the delta? The delta is an ecosystem. It is not a very good plumbing system. And we need to come to grips with that and figure out how we're going to make that happen. So, short-term emergency response. Longer term, we need to figure out how we're going to move water through the delta more successfully. This says, we need to have the Water Board replaced as the agency overseeing Palo Alto Superfund Sites. I appreciate your efforts to move oversight to U.S. EPA, but this seems to be problematic for various reasons. However, California DTSC, the Department of Toxic Substances Control, just issued a new policy on vapor intrusion mitigate, don't you love this district, vapor intrusion mitigation that is quite complete. DTSC already oversees the Hillview Porter Sites next to our Superfund Sites and will do a far better job of protecting public health. Can you please work to have DTSC, if not EPA, replace the Water Board for Superfund Sites in Palo Alto? I will, this is a pretty specific question. I will follow up with the questioner and my staff. One of the challenges in a state this large is that responsibility for a lot of things is carved up between and among various agencies. And it is, in my view, sometimes difficult to make sure that the left hand and the right hand know what one another are doing, let alone are actually working in concert to get the right thing done. But on this particular issue with Water Board, DTSC, and other agencies, we're happy to work with the person who raised the question. How about there should not be a law? Meaning, why not pass legislation that reduces the number of bills senators may pass annually? As a side note, a similar bill in the Assembly failed this year. Well, first, for those of you who know that I do the annual there ought to be a law contest, I should tell you, every year, we put in the announcement the fact that we are happy to take suggestions for laws to be eliminated or fixed. And whatever reason, that, maybe it's the title of the contest, but that doesn't seem to quite get through. So let me underscore that. If you think there's a law that needs to be taken off the books or that needs to be fixed, we are happy to receive that as part of the annual there ought to be a law contest. This is the 11th and final year. And we have had 18 pieces of legislation passed so far and signed into law that are now law for 38 million Californians because somebody had a good idea at the beginning of the year and thought so. One of the ones that comes to mind on this topic of there ought not to be a law is, we had a couple in Sunnyvale, I believe, about two or three years ago. Now, you're going to think I'm making this up, so stay with me on this one. We had a couple in Sunnyvale two or three years ago who said there needs to be a fix to an existing law. Their trees had grown during the time they lived in their home and then cashed shade on their next-door neighbor's solar panels. Under the then-existing California state law, that was a criminal offense. So the neighbor with the solar panels went to the police, who went to the district attorney's office, who prosecuted the case as a criminal matter. And the tree growers spent $40,000 in legal fees before they were convicted of the crime of allowing their trees to grow and cash shade on the next-door neighbor's solar panels. Their view on the there ought to be a law contest was that there ought not to be a law that made you a criminal for letting your trees grow, particularly if your trees were there first, and that allowed you to be dragged into criminal court to the tune of $40,000 in fees. And my view was that they made a very compelling case. And that, some of you may know, California was sort of in the process of putting its Million Solar Roofs Initiative into place. And I could just see a million prosecutions up and down the state of California and said, we need to get this sorted out. Ultimately, I took what I thought was the rather common sense view that trees and solar were not mutually exclusive, that we just needed to have a better set of rules, regulations, and understandings laying out the rights and responsibilities of all parties, that this should not be a criminal matter and that we should not be using our criminal courts or the police power of the state to prosecute what are essentially neighborhood disputes that you'd hope people of goodwill could sort out, but if not, should be done in a civil setting. But that's an example where somebody said, I don't want a new law. I want a law that's been on the books for three or four decades to be updated and fixed. And ultimately, I was amazed. It became one of those only in California stories. And the New York Times was on the scene and, but ultimately, we got it sorted out. So if you have an ought to be a law idea that's to take a law off the books or to fix an existing law, happy to do that. And I'm thinking now, as I look at our time, it's probably time for High Speed Rail, Brock. We have about 25 or 30 questions on High Speed Rail. My capable staff says that they are arranged thematically. Now, what that means, I'm not altogether sure, but they're all all together. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read a few of these out. And we'll then respond to each of these little clusters. The first one says, Senator, you support the concept of high-speed rail in California, but want it done right. It's easy to support a concept if it doesn't have a price tag. If you believe the cost of high-speed rail would be a minimum of $66 billion, and that's the questioner's number, not mine, and that California faces tremendous financial challenges, how can you continue to support the high-speed rail concept? Next one. Proposition, see, there's another interested party. Proposition 1A was deeply flawed and superficial. It is now clear that it was grossly premature. Now we have a political fight with the only real support for the project coming from the construction trade unions. I have to say respectfully, I think that that's an inaccurate assessment, and I'll come back to that. How can state representatives possibly support a flawed project which can only be a detriment to the taxpayers? You're right, Brock. There does seem to be a theme here. What do you think about the research report that shows 62.4% of California voters would vote to stop high-speed rail? Would you support a proposition to repeal Prop. 1A and cancel or suspend high-speed rail indefinitely? Question, you have always asserted that the majority of Californians support the high-speed rail. I don't think I've always asserted that. I'll come back to that in a minute. Now that a recent poll shows that a majority would vote against it, is there some way to reflect the will of the majority? Questions, three of them. What would the process be to cancel high-speed rail in its entirety? Number 2, are we there yet? 3, where does the governor stand on this issue? Okay. Anything else that falls into that thematic category? That's it for now. Okay. Where to begin? I have said for some time that I support the concept of high-speed rail done right. People have, I think, then understandably and appropriately said, and exactly what does high-speed rail done right look like? What does that phrase mean? What that phrase means to me is that we have a high-speed rail project that makes sense financially, that is in fact financially sound, that's doable. Second, that there is in fact a statewide system, not some incoherent collection of individual projects that have no real statewide connection. And third, that the High Speed Rail Authority engage with the community in a way that is more responsible and responsive, which to date, they have not been able to do, in my observation. Some of you know that for a couple of years, my colleague in the Senate, Senator Alan Lowenthal, and I were really the sort of two, I don't know if you can have two lone voices, but we were the two lone voices trying to raise some of these issues in the aftermath of the passage of the bond back in 2008. I will tell you, and when we had this conversation last year here in the chambers, a number of folks were surprised when I said, you know, there really aren't that many other members of the legislature who are tuned in on this issue. And people looked a little startled. And then I think began to do a little investigation and discovered that that was in fact the case. That has changed in the last year. I will tell you that there are far more members of the legislature who are attentive and engaged and who are frankly skeptical. And at least one of my colleagues, a Republican state senator named Doug LaMalfa, came forward with a bill to just say, stop. Just stop. So that's by way of a little background. I continue to believe that as a concept, to underscore the point that somebody made in their question, high-speed rail has the potential to benefit California from a transportation planning standpoint, from a land use planning standpoint, and from an economic development standpoint. That being said, I am less optimistic today than I have ever been about the ability of the High Speed Rail Authority to pull its act together and get it done. I continue to be frustrated by the trips, stumbles, and falls around community engagement. We are seeing similar struggles up and down the state, in the Central Valley and in Southern California. I do not think that, and I don't think that it is fair to characterize anyone who raises a legitimate question or concern as an NIMBY. I just, it's not, it's not the way you sort out problems. I've been in the public arena for a pretty long time now. And the thing I've learned is, you got to listen to people. And listening doesn't always mean agreeing, but you got to listen. And, you know, if you're a talker like I am, that takes some learning. But you got to listen. And I think that the High Speed Rail Authority is taking a very long time to learn that lesson. We will see in two weeks, three, two or three weeks, a business plan from the High Speed Rail Authority that is, will be in draft form and available for comment. And I think it will be a watershed moment for high-speed rail. And I say that because I think people's patience is running out, both in the public and in the state legislature. There are some obvious questions that have been asked and have yet to be answered. Some of them have to do with ridership projections. And the ridership projections we've seen to date have not been persuasive to most objective analysts. We need to see what the ridership projections look like in the new business plan that comes out in a couple of weeks. Some of the questions have to do with funding. And obviously, funding and revenue to support the project have to do, has a lot to do with ridership. But there are other questions as well, like where will the rest of the money come from? The project is currently thought to be a $40-plus-billion-dollar project by the High Speed Rail Authority. You heard at least one of the questioners has an expectation that it'll be tens of billions more than that. Whether you're a 40-plus-billion or a 60-plus-billion person, you can pretty quickly figure out that if there's $10 billion in the mix from state bond measures, that leaves a lot to be accounted for. The situation in the federal government is rather clearly very different than it was just a year ago. A year ago, there was probably some good reason to think that federal funds would be forthcoming in some significant degree. Today, I think it's hard to be optimistic about that. Now, the world can change quickly, as we've seen. But it's a little hard to know on what you would premise an expectation of billions or tens of billions of dollars in federal funding, given the current circumstances in the national capital. On the more local scene, some of you will recall that back in April, Congresswoman Anna Eshoo and I, along with my legislative colleague, Rich Gordon, an Assembly member, put forward a proposal for what we called a blended system. And our, and I won't speak for my colleagues, but I think it's fair to say, our fundamental case was this. Look, it does not make sense to be talking about an immense project from San Francisco to San Jose when A, the dollars are not there, B, it's unnecessarily disruptive, and C, it's largely duplicative of what we have available in an existing corridor. Wouldn't it make more sense, we argued, to scrap the plan for a 60-foot viaduct running up and down the corridor to acknowledge that you will stay within the existing right-of-way for Caltrain so that homeowners and business owners didn't have to worry about whether or not they were going to be pushed aside? And third, and finally, please shelve the notion of an environmental impact report that focuses on a megaproject because even if you don't build it or can't build it or never will be able to build it, if you've approved a environmental document for a megaproject, even if it never gets built, that casts a pall over the entire corridor because for five, 10, 20, or 30 years, people are going to be saying, well, someday that may happen, if in fact that's what the environmental documents were prepared for. We've asked that all of that be put aside and that instead, the High Speed Rail Authority come back and talk to us all from San Francisco to San Jose about a blended system that integrates high-speed rail with a 21st-century Caltrain. A 21st-century Caltrain would be electrified and it would have something called Positive Train Control, which is a fancy way for saying, let's make sure we've got some computers that keep us from bumping into each other. And that would allow us to move more quickly, more trains. And we feel that if you do that, you can eliminate much, not all, much of the disruption and reduce the cost by many billions. As it happens, just yesterday, the High Speed Rail Authority issued its first response to that request. So after six months, we have the response. And I think, and now I'm paraphrasing their language. Their first response was, we can do without the viaduct, although we appreciate the fact that you've said if a city wants a viaduct, that you wouldn't oppose that. And they're right. So if you all want a viaduct, you know, go to it. The second thing is they said they could substantially stay within the right-of-way, that there are some places where they might need five or 10 feet, but substantially stay within the right-of-way. And the third issue, which is not yet resolved, is the issue of whether or not they can scale back the EIR. I am firmly convinced, as someone who works in this field, that they can. And I thought we had a good conversation with their legal representation from the Attorney General's Office when they came to speak to the Budget Subcommittee that I chair earlier in the year. Some of you were there. And I thought ultimately, the Attorney General's Office said out loud what was a fairly common sense thing, which is, well, yes, if you are prepared to scale the project back, then you only have to do an environmental document for the redefined scaled-back project, not for a project you don't have any plan on doing. So I think we can get there. All of that being said, I want to clarify a couple of things. One is, I think I don't see a commitment to a blended system as being the end of the conversation. I see a commitment to a blended system as the beginning of a conversation. My view has been that until and unless we get a commitment for what I've characterized as the blended system, there's nothing to talk about because the proposals that have been on the table are practically non-starters. They are non-starters in terms of cost, and they are non-starters in terms of disruption to the corridor, and they are non-starters in terms of community opposition. So we will, if we can get to yes on the blended system, then, in my view, have the basis for an intelligent conversation up and down the peninsula. I have not suggested, and I think, you know, I fault myself for perhaps not being clear about this. I am not suggesting that the blended system is the answer or the solution. I'm suggesting, as I said, that it's the starting point for a conversation. If you oppose high-speed rail, you can still oppose high-speed rail, but say, we shouldn't even be talking about anything but a blended system. If you support high-speed rail, you can say, I support high-speed rail, but we need to see a blended system if I'm going to continue to be a supporter of high-speed rail. It is the starting point for a conversation. And then the last thing I'll say before we go on to the next batch of cards is this. I, we are expected to see this business plan in two weeks, two and a half weeks. At that point, it will be three years since the bond measure passed. If after three years, you haven't got a business plan worthy of the name, then I think it's very tough to go forward. And again, folks, I, I know that on this issue, you know, there are some of you who say, for God's sakes, why don't you just say you support high-speed rail? There are others who say, for God's sakes, why don't you just say you oppose high-speed rail? I do think it is important to note I do think it is important to note, there was an election. The bond measure passed. It may have passed narrowly, but it passed. Elections have consequences. You know, you get stuck with the folks you elect for four years, whether you're happy with them every day of their four-year term in office. In this case, the bond measure got approved. Is it possible for us to unwind that? Yeah. But I want you to stop and think about what a dramatic thing that is for elected officials to essentially take action contrary to the expressed will of the public, absent some other ballot measure, which is a possibility. But I do think, and I have said repeatedly to the folks at the High-Speed Rail Authority, if after three years, you don't have a business plan that really does address these issues of ridership and funding, it's going to be very tough to generate support going forward, blended system or not, in the area that I happen to represent and care most specifically about. So stay tuned. We'll see what happens in the next couple of weeks. I think this really is a watershed moment. As to where the governor is, not clear. I will tell you, I mentioned earlier, for those of you who are here from the very beginning, I think the governor has struggled to tackle some of the other problems that are on his to-do list because of his focus, understandable, on the budget during the first six months of the year. I got a call back in March, I think, from someone in the budget, excuse me, in the governor's office, saying, we need to sit down and talk about high-speed rail. Would you be willing to be part of that conversation down here in the governor's office? I said, of course. About a week and a half later, they said, we're going to hold off on that. We'll get back to you. Phone hasn't been ringing off the hook on that subject since. And I think part of the reason for that is that the governor and his folks are still trying to figure out where they want to go, as everyone in this room has reason to know. This is a more complicated issue than it might appeal at, appear at first blush. And I think the governor and his folks are quickly figuring that out, that there aren't easy or quick answers, given the challenges. I'm going to add one more last thing to the last thing I said I would share with you, and that is, do we have any press here today, just out of curiosity? Any press in the room, just out of curiosity? There we go. Thanks. Well, we're going to break some news. You ready? I got tired of hearing people make absolute assertions about where the community was on the issue of high-speed rail. And so I thought, well, next time I go do some polling, I'll ask. So here's what I know, based on polling in our area. And I'll share it with you, just so you have some facts. And, you know, I don't, I didn't have any predisposition about what the answer should be. I was curious to know, what is the answer? Most of you know that the statewide ballot measure passed, what was it, 52, 53% three years ago? In our area, and by that I mean the 11th Senate District, it passed close to 60-40, as I recall, somewhere in that vicinity. And 12 of the 13 cities and towns that I represent voted for the measure, Atherton being the dissenter among the 13 cities and towns that I represent. So 60-40 in our area. I asked in a recent survey, if the ballot measure, if the bond were on the ballot again today, would you vote for the $9, $10-billion bond for high-speed rail linking Northern and Southern California? And it was a toss-up. It was split right down the middle, statistical margin of error, right down the middle, maybe a couple of points one way or the other, but basically split down the middle. An interesting follow-up question, at least interesting to me, was, would you support continuing the project if you knew that the cost and the source of funds were uncertain, that the cost of the project and the source of the funds for the project were uncertain? And by an almost two-to-one margin, people said no. So there is clearly a great deal of concern, at least in my area, our area, about the fact that we're not really sure how much this project is going to cost going forward, and we're not really clear where the money's going to come from. And that seems to be a big issue of concern to people that I polled in an effort to sort of get a sense for where they are. So it's not that I really thought that either of those two factors were going to be helpful in any big sense, but I did think it was sort of important to have some numbers that I could look at and say, they weren't brought to us by someone who had an agenda one way or the other. This is what folks in my area said when we asked them. Split almost down the middle on whether or not they would support the project if it were on the ballot again today, very different than the 60-40 that we had three years ago, and a great deal of anxiety about the fact that if we don't know what the project's going to cost, and we don't know where the money's going to come from, continuing is a source of concern. Why don't I stop there and see what the next group are, because I want to try and respect Well, the first question is, why did you travel to Azerbaijan? I'm going to, I don't think that falls into the high-speed rail category. We'll come back to that one if we have time. These folks say, we are against the high-speed rail project because of the impact on our property and community. Many middle and lower economic-income people will be hurt by this project. Please consider this. This money could be used for much better, more critical uses. Thank you. Including quality education for California children. All right? Will the governor take into account the effect high-speed rail debt will have on future budgets? How can he rationalize, there we go, high-speed rail spending when education, et cetera, will suffer? And here, I think the questioner is talking about the fact that our debt service is going up in California. So if you look at our $85, $86-billion-a-year general fund budget, an increasingly large proportion of that budget is going to pay debt on California bonds. For years, Californians have thought of bond measures as free money. I think it's important that we remember this isn't free money. You have to not only pay back the money, you have to pay the interest cost of the money. For fiscal conservatives, that's always been an issue. But for folks who are worried about our increasing inability to adequately fund public education and health and welfare, it's also now an issue. So you have an interesting conversation taking place in the Capitol that perhaps didn't take place 10 years ago, between folks who are self-styled fiscal conservatives and folks who think of themselves as social progressives, who both share the concern about the fact that a rising percentage of our state budget goes to debt service. Next comment or question. The High-Speed Rail sent a request to the Finance Department asking for $65 million from 2010 funds for right-of-way prep. Sources say this isn't lawful. Will you vote against this until the business plan is released? On that question, and, you know, again, got to love this district. Everybody knows what's going on. Yes, the High-Speed Rail Authority did ask for some additional funding for right-of-way. And the request went, as a matter of process, to something called the Joint Legislative Budget Committee. The Joint Legislative Budget Committee then asked those of us who have been involved in high-speed rail issues what we thought. And I asked my office to send back word to the Joint Legislative Budget Committee that I thought it was an inappropriate request at this time, given the fact that we still didn't have a business plan after three years. And that before we started going down the path of acquiring right-of-way to any greater degree than we have thus far, we ought to see the business plan and have an opportunity to assess whether or not we think the business plan is worthy. Says, would you be interested in a complaint, excuse me, would you be interested in a, oh, compliant, not complaint, okay, forgive me. Would you be interested in a 100% AB 3034 compliant business plan for Caltrain? And the next one is, what kind of rigor will legislators require in the upcoming business plan as far as the quest for capital? Would you allow the project to start in the hope of Congress passing infrastructure bank legislation for rail? In the past, when we've asked the High-Speed Rail Authority, so what do you do if you don't get any more money? The initial response was that the expenditures of the $10 billion would be for projects that had what were, had what is known as independent utility. And you're all having exactly the same look on your face that I did, which is, what on earth does that mean? And independent utility means, if we're going to go spend some high-speed rail money over here, or over here, or over here, if it turns out we run out of money, is there independent utility value worth product for the money we spent over here, and over here, and over here? In other words, on a standalone basis, would it have value if we just suddenly say one day, we're out of money and we have to stop? That has been the policy rationale that the High-Speed Rail Authority has offered. It's a little hard to put that into context when, as some of you know, the High-Speed Rail Authority has decided to do its first big real project in the Central Valley, which is an area that is not particularly heavily developed. Now, I have to tell you, some folks in our corridor and in Southern California said, good, let them go to the Central Valley. Others said, no, we could have used the jobs and the economic development here, and by the way, you know, it would be great to upgrade our existing corridors if they could figure out that's the right way to do it. But it's a little hard to know how a project in the Central Valley, in a largely undeveloped area, has independent utility if the whole thing comes to a stop one day soon. I have not taken a position on the Central Valley project. You know, I'm sort of more focused on the big picture statewide and on the San Francisco-to-San Jose corridor, because that's an area where I have a responsibility to represent you all. But the Central Valley project, and again, the authority makes what I think is a fair argument, which is, you know, if we're going to do this, and it's hard, and this is our first stretch of real track, why don't we do it in a place that has fewer challenges, is less developed, and where we can learn by experience under less challenging circumstances? I think the authority might acknowledge today, it's proved to be pretty challenging even in that part of the state. Folks there are not happy to be thought of as a place where, you know, there isn't anything to worry about. They think there's plenty to worry about. So I do think we, one of the things that we have to ask ourselves is, if the money runs out, do we have the rail equivalent of, you remember when we used to see the freeway overpasses that just stopped in the middle and you kind of wondered where they were supposed to go? You don't want to see $10 billion worth of that in the rail world. So I think that the authority will be in a position of having to explain to us, what is the independent utility? What is the value added? What is the standalone merit of the projects you would do if you continue to go forward, unless we see in the business plan a compelling argument that another $30, $40 billion can be identified? And I'm frankly not terribly hopeful that's going to be the case. What are the consequences to the state if High-Speed Rail Authority is wrong about revenue and ridership estimates? Well, this is one where we have to make sure that the consequences to the state aren't High-Speed Rail Authority showing up 10 years from now and saying, you know what, we need another $10 or $20-billion bond measure, because that wasn't the deal. That wasn't the understanding. And while I think all of us are worldly enough to understand that projects often end up costing more than initially anticipated, having a, essentially a bait and switch to the tune of another $10 billion, I think, is unacceptable. Next question. How will the legislature vet the work done by Cambridge Systematics, given they were given a no-bid contract by PB, Parsons Brinckerhoff, and they have indemnified the state for any mistakes or errors? Excuse me? They have not indemnified the state, I think. They have not. I think the word "not" is missing. I think the only answer I would give is, I do think there are increasing numbers of members of the legislature who are willing to give this information a hard and skeptical look. And by skeptical, I don't mean cynical, and I don't mean negative. I just mean skeptical. I think in my office, we actually have a motto, which is that I want my staff to bring skepticism, but not cynicism, to the work we do when we deal with various state agencies. And, you know, we understand that everybody has a case to make, and we're happy to let them make it, but we need to be skeptical, not cynical, about it when we hear from various folks that all is well and there's nothing to worry about. I do think there are increasing number of members who are skeptical, but not cynical. And I think that that answers all of the questions in that packet. Rock? And folks, shall we stay for another five or 10 minutes and try and wrap this up? Is that okay? 12 was our originally scheduled time? MTC agreed to help facilitate high-speed rail on the peninsula at the request of the Bay Area Council Business Group. Why? Getting nine counties involved in peninsula decisions is not desirable to some cities. I have to say, I am skeptical about MTC's potential involvement. I know the Bay Area Council, which is a Bay Area business group, has thought that perhaps the MTC could play the role of honest broker. I have told the folks at the Bay Area Council that I am personally skeptical about MTC. I've worked closely with MTC, this Metropolitan Transportation Commission. Metropolitan Transportation Commission. And it is comprised of representatives from the nine Bay Area counties. There is, they are there to do work on a host of regional transportation issues. The Bay Area Council, which is a business organization in the Bay Area, has thought that the Metropolitan Transportation Commission might be a useful player, participant in this process. I just will tell you, I'm skeptical about MTC in general, based on my work with them over the past decade in the legislature and prior to that during my time in local government. I mean no disrespect, I just mean to say I'm a skeptic. With federal high-speed rail money drying up, can we use the California $9-billion-bond money to electrify Caltrain now? Probably not. And I say that because I do think that it's important that the $9 billion out of the almost $10 billion that was authorized be used consistent with state law and with the reasonable expectations of the voters. I have, in fact, I had some folks who questioned when we put the blended system proposal forward, is this really just a ruse to fund your local commuter service? And the answer is no. It's probably unlawful, and even if it wasn't unlawful, it's not something I would support. I thought the blended system was an acknowledgement that doing, paying twice for the same corridor unnecessarily didn't make sense, and that we could have the best of both worlds if we could sort of stop talking about this duplicative and costly and disruptive system. But to simply say, can't we just take that money and use it for commuter purposes rather than high-speed rail purposes? Not allowed. AB 952 passed the legislature to strengthen the conflict of interest laws specifically as it concerns the High-Speed Rail Authority. The governor vetoed the bill. Can you override the veto? Theoretically, yes. According to our civics books, we can. As a practical matter, it's a highly unlikely event. There has not been a veto override for any legislation with any governor since Governor Brown was last governor, all those years ago, more than a quarter of a century ago. With every independent agency who has examined the program saying it has major problems, is there truly a way to stop this project, talking about high-speed rail? If it can't be done right, can it be stopped? And once started, how can a project like this be stopped? Think Big Dig in Boston. What qualifies as a boondoggle? I do not believe that boondoggle is defined in the California code. Pretty much everything else is, but not boondoggle. I want to just go back to an answer I gave earlier, which was that I really do think that we're at a watershed moment. You know, I know there's no end of reports and dates and requirements and obligations, but come October 15th, we were supposed to have the report, the business plan. The High-Speed Rail Authority said, we need a few more weeks. And I actually, on the one hand, while that's frustrating to me, because it's like, you know, are we constantly trying to drag the information out of these folks that we need? I have some reason to think that the reason for the delay is that there are some new members of the High-Speed Rail Authority Board who are asking some new and important questions. And if an extra couple of weeks means those questions are going to get asked and addressed, then good, because they're questions that need to be asked and answered. But that being said, I really do think, I mean, there'll be a comment period, the legislature will then be back in session in January, and I think at that point, you know, it's going to be very tough if after three years, we don't have good answers and the High-Speed Rail Authority does not have a business plan worthy of the name. I think people are going to have to sort of pull themselves up short and say, where are we? This can't keep going on. Three years is a long time. I mean, I think it's fair to say, look, big change in responsibilities after the bond measure, small entity that was primarily a planning and advocacy organization overnight responsible for a $40-billion-plus megaproject, that's going to take some time to transition. Okay. Okay. Six months? A year? Three years, not okay. So I think that's where a lot of my colleagues are likely to be. And then, going back into the questions, there was a question about, why did you travel, I think we're done with the high-speed rail questions, believe it or not, yes? Okay. Why did you travel to Azerbaijan? When you visited Nagorno-Karabakh, were you trying to assist in the peace process between Armenia and Azerbaijan? And those are two questions. For those of you who have no idea what we're talking about, let me tell you. California receives probably 100 delegations a year from abroad. And if you stop and think about it, it makes sense. No matter where you are in the world, people know California, they know Silicon Valley. They come to California to see how we do what we do, which is why I'm a little more optimistic in some ways than one of the earlier questions might suggest, because there's still a lot we have to share that people value. And it's the reason why people come and visit. Every year, there probably are three or four delegations that go from California abroad with the Senate Office of International Relations. And members of the legislature, excuse me, members of the Senate have an opportunity to travel on those trips, to visit other parts of the world and talk to folks there. Sometimes the trips are hosted or sponsored by nonprofit groups or governments. Other times, the members will pick up either all or part of their own costs from voluntary contributions to their office holder accounts, not paid for at taxpayer expense. Did I mention not paid for at taxpayer expense? I try to go every couple of years, frankly. And I try to go because it is my view that the public is better served by elected officials who have a broader worldview, rather than a narrower worldview. I think as long as you are thoughtful and selective about where you go, it's in the public's interest. I'm sure there are some trips that you would roll your eyes at. I will tell you that in, I have made an effort post-9/11 to travel to places that are either key in terms of the Arab world situation in the Middle East, or that are Muslim-majority nations. So in 2007, I went on a Senate trip to Israel and Jordan, and then went on for a further trip by myself to Lebanon, because I thought Lebanon was frankly an under-reported story in the U.S. and a key player in the region. In 2009, I went on a Senate trip to Egypt, which I think proved somewhat prescient, given the subsequent events in Egypt. It is, and we sometimes forget this, home to the largest Arab population in the world, in terms of any single nation. And then this year, in 2011, there was a Senate trip scheduled to Turkey, Iraq, and Azerbaijan. So I spent two weeks in Turkey, Iraq, and Azerbaijan. I thought it was a very worthwhile trip on a number of levels. Following that two-week trip, I went on for six, seven days by myself to Armenia and a place called Nagorno-Karabakh, which I'm guessing 90% of you have never heard of in your lives. Nagorno-Karabakh has been in a cold peace with Azerbaijan for the last 20 years. Nagorno-Karabakh claims independent status as a sovereign state. Azerbaijan claims that territorial integrity compels Nagorno-Karabakh to understand that it is part of Azerbaijan. The folks in Nagorno-Karabakh, who have been self-governing for 20 years, say that self-determination compels their ability to be an independent nation-state. And there is an international mediation process under the auspices of the Organization for Security and Cooperation in Europe, OSCE, through something called the Minsk Group, which has three chairs, U.S., Russia, and France. And they have been trying to find a peaceful settlement. The fact that I traveled to Nagorno-Karabakh after having been in Azerbaijan was somewhat disconcerting to the government officials in Azerbaijan. I thought ultimately, and I believe this very much, I think you need to spend time on the ground, whether it's in my district, elsewhere in the country, or around the world, to understand the forces and tensions that are playing out. And I think I'm fortunate, frankly, to have a district that will take a look at the, hopefully thoughtful, decisions I have made about where I travel and for what purposes, and say, yeah, we think we're probably well-served by someone who has a broader worldview rather than a narrow worldview. 35% of the population here in Santa Clara County is foreign-born. We are in a global age. We are a Pacific Rim state, obviously. We border Latin America, but there are huge populations that have deep connections and ties to other parts of the world. And fundamentally, I think 38 million Californians are more likely to sort out their differences in a thoughtful, peaceful, and deliberate way, if those of us in public office and public service have a broader understanding. So that's a little history on the trip. If you'd like more, I'm happy to share it after the fact. But we've run about 10 minutes long. I want to thank you all for being here today. Ordinarily, I would close by saying, stay in touch. But with this particular group, I know that exhortation is unnecessary. So let me say, thank you for giving up your Saturday morning. It's been good to be with you all.